Okay. Hope everybody's good. Sorry I'm late. I'm running as fast as I can. And we got to be going lots of different directions. But, uh, let's say this. Before we get into the weeds on a lot of different stuff, you know, it's, it's always, it's always a challenging time, especially with our legislature in session and all the different opportunities, positives, negatives, that can come out of whatever it may be that we try to pass or do pass or don't pass. Now, it's a great day to be a West Virginian. From the standpoint, if you evaluate us at where we were two or three years ago, there's, there's, it is only a great day if you're evaluating us against maybe poor past performance. Now, I said this yesterday at a tourism meeting that I was speaking at, and I really mean it. You know, I really mean that I think the good ideas that I may come up with, I believe, always come from the good board, and I'll take credit for the bad ones. And I say that because I feel obligated, because I am blessed. All of us are blessed. And we should give thanks to the proper reason why we are blessed all the time. Now, with that being said, I said, someone asked, "Where do you think, Jim, we're going to be 20 years from today?" And here's exactly what I said. I said, "I think we'll be in a position that we'll have all the opportunities and all the luxuries that all the states have that we desire, and we'll be able to live in paradise." And that's what I think. That's what I really, truly think. I think that all the things that we've wanted are coming our way, and if we don't get in our own way, we can make more and more and more good happen in West Virginia every day. And I think all those things like the Four Seasons, our proximity to all the two-thirds of the population of the country, our craftsmen, our faith-based, our great people, our natural resources, all the things that we know we got are starting to really unfold and really come to play. And every day we get up, we look outside into mountains, and we see the incredible waters, waters, trout streams, and all the greatness, and we live in paradise. We do. So, that's where I see this. Now, you as counties, you gotta know this. Whether you buy it or don't buy it, you know, that's up to you. But you gotta know that you've got a governor that solely and in many, many, many ways believes in you. And the reason I do is because you're on the front lines. You know what's going on in your county, and you know really, truly, better than anybody what ought to be done. Now, I hate to say this, but the truth again is, in lots of situations, the cities have, or more maybe others, have neglected the value of the importance of the counties. And we have. We just have. You see, I'm the guy that always just tells it like it is. You know, whether you like it or not, again, I'm gonna tell you the truth, the best that I can possibly do. So, you got a bill going through right now. You know, it basically allows the people in the county to vote if you want to be annexed or non-annexed. Wholeheartedly, without any question, I am a thousand percent supportive of that. I think the people should vote if they want to vote, as to whether or not they ought to be annexed or non-annexed. You know, from the standpoint of things that are at play, that I know that you're concerned with, you know, I would be the first to stand up on the very top of the mountain and say, "If, if we can get rid of this machinery and inventory tax, if we can get rid of it and you not be hurt, in fact, you benefit greatly from it, and we can afford it," I'd be the first person to stand up and say, "I'm all in. I'm all in." Now, what did I say there? What I said there is just simply this. We've got to be able to afford, and we've got to be able for you to be pleased. We gotta do that. Now, if we can't, then I'm not standing up there. That's what it has to be. You know, it's just as simple as just that. Now, we can ask me fifty million questions and all that kind of stuff. I do think there's a methodology here, some way, somehow, that we can get rid of something that would give us the opportunity, because there is real potential, underline, potential, 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 underline, 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 benefit. There's potential, real benefit, from the standpoint of the attraction of manufacturing and all this stuff on petrochemicals, real guys. It's as real as real could get. All the stuff about the alternative uses for coal, real, are real. So absolutely, the attraction to West Virginia, one of, I don't know, 12 to 15 states that still has this tax, it's, it's an impediment. It really is. Now, we can't just do something in hopes without you being all in. So, we got some work to do there. We got a lot of work to do there. We got different proposals on the table. Everybody knows exactly where I'm at. You know? Now, I don't really know what else to say to you other than just to thank you. Thank you for all you do every day. Know this, and I say it, I say it proudly. When I was a little teen fella, maybe this big, I was born about that big. But, but we, we were living in a red house, a white frame house, on the end of Ford Street, Denin Road, in Berkeley, West Virginia. We were right across the road, there's a little cemetery there, and that's where I played all the time. Now, my grandparents, every time I visited them, they never had any plumbing. My dad was an only child. My grandparents on that side had a coal furnace right in the middle of the house. You had to jump across at night, or you'd step on it and burn your feet. You know, Copperston, West Virginia, Huff Mountain, in all honesty, I have been you all my life. And I have been the people of your county all my life. And I absolutely will never change. Never. I want goodness for all of us. I don't want them left out. And so, I said before, irregardless of what you may think, I'm with you, I've been with you, I won't change, and the state is moving in a great way, and there's many, many, many opportunities that we have got right at our fingertips. Last thing I'd say, and then if you choose to ask something, I'll try to answer it as best I can. The last thing I'd say is just this. If we've ever, and you've heard me say this before, but if we've ever on the planet and the stars lined up our way, it's right now. It's just right now. You know, just think, we've, you've got a governor that is the best buds with the guy that is the most powerful man in the whole world. The guy that is running the free world, Donald Trump. You got a governor that just happens to be his best bud. And in all of that, we have a federal infrastructure program that is right at our fingertips. We have got someone that believes, totally believes, from a petrochemical standpoint, that the exposure and the golf, all the eggs in one spot, is probably not wise. You have absolutely so many things that are right there, just right there for the taking. You know, a president to pick the phone up and call little Jimmy Justice from Forest Street, that was skinny at one time, had brown hair at one time, and calls me and says, "Big Jim." No, in fact, that day, he said, "Jim." And I knew something was up, because he's usually screaming, "Big Jim, Big Jim, how you doing?" And it was serious. He said, "I have the deputy premier of China right here, and I have the ambassador of China right here, and I want you to head up this transaction in regard to coal." And it's a big transaction. It could be. He says it is, and it's done. Now, in heading that up, you know, what I would do is I would call in all the producers of West Virginia, and then I would introduce and make that, and then let them do whatever they choose to do. Now, but just think about this. That transaction is for nine million tons of metallurgical coal and 16 million tons of thermal coal. Now, what does that really mean? Today in West Virginia, we're producing about 21 million tons of thermal coal, of metallurgical coal. It's half. It's half of what we're producing today. And on the thermal side, it is not half, but it's probably approaching 25 percent. It would really help West Virginia. Unbelievable. And then he said, "And Jim, I want all of that coal to be bought and turn to the Chinese, I want all of that coal to be bought in West Virginia." Honest to goodness, I mean, that's what we have at our fingertips. That's the relationship we have. That's the hope we have. And will it all materialize? Probably not. But the opportunities are unbelievable. They're unbelievable. So, I would just again close by saying, "Thank you for all you do. You got a big guy here that's in your court, he's been in your court, he won't change. Lots of him in this room that are real friends." And I would say, "God bless." And then if you want to ask me something, I have that. Yes, ma'am.
Governor Justice, on behalf of the Department of Natural Gas, thank you for your passion to support the making of these pipelines. And I know that you understand the significance of the task for the economy in the state of West Virginia, but those of us in the counties who are impacted by that pipeline are desperately needing to see, to see it go through. So, we just look forward on you, if anything you can do to help to smooth the pathways through the federal government and the Atlantic Pipeline, we'd be grateful, we appreciate it.
Well, I don't know if everybody can hear, but it was in regard to the pipelines, and, and it was, it was encouragement from the standpoint of, "Governor Justice, help us in any way, shape, form, or fashion to be able to get those pipelines through," and all that kind of stuff. Let me tell you, you know, I, I am a real advocate of that. I am a real advocate because, you know, I truly believe without any question, we have the cheapest natural gas, the most abundant natural gas, and the net of the whole thing is it. Let me say what you want me to say. You want me to always tell you the truth, I hope. You know, because that's all I'm gonna do. You're not gonna catch me telling you something that I knowingly know is not the truth. There's no way. There's no possibility. Now, here's the deal. Our natural gas producers today are producing gas in prices less than $2. And, and the $2 is a ni-mex price, and, and the last go around that I checked, which was not moving, days ago, was a $1.88. But by the time it equates back to us in West Virginia, it's probably a dollar. Now, and to do that and stay alive is very difficult on our gas producers today. Whether you like them or you don't like them, it's very difficult. But we gotta like them because of all the goodness that they're bringing to all of us everywhere, all the time. So I know when we like them, I love them. And I want to make things better and better and better and better and better for them. Now, look, for them to be able to tread water at a $1.88 ni-mex price, they're going, they're treading as hard as they can, and they're treading, and they're treading, and they're treading. But at some point in time, they're gonna get tired of treading, and they're gonna drown. But we can't afford them to drown. There's no way. One of the things that we gotta do, I mean, it's gonna boil right down to this and this all, there's two of them. At some point in time, we will have petrochemical manufacturing in West Virginia, and we will have the ability to use some of our own gas, and it'll be great. Will that save us? No, it won't do it. It won't save the resource that we have, and the other part of the resource is just this, is our country being energy self-sufficient is a boom like you can't imagine. But that gas has got to be exported. It has to be exported. Now, the only way we're gonna export it is the pipelines. It's all there is to it. It's just as simple as that. So, we have to be for that. And, and you know, that's hung up right now, and it's a blessing that it's with our Supreme Court. You know, we'll see what happens in April. You know, our president and everybody in the world knows exactly where I stand and everything. We can influence the Supreme Court, but I think we're gonna come out with a good ruling there, and I hope it's gonna be good. Yes, sir?
Governor, I hope you can hear me. You talked about being on a mountaintop, willing to yell down if it was affordable, and if counties would support it, and there would be some potential, underline, 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 benefits. I have something else for you if you'd be willing to yell it, that I guarantee you, every commissioner in this room would be in support of. And it wouldn't be potential benefits, it would be real, real, underline, underline, benefits that we would experience immediately, is if you went to yell for the mountaintop, the agreement that county commissions no longer have to pay regional jail bills.
I am really glad you brought that up. Okay. So I'm not working anymore, I gotta go. Okay, here's the deal. We talked about this probably an hour ago. I can't believe that I didn't bring it up right in the beginning myself and things, so, because I would've if I, you know, my brain's just, you know, I don't carry notes, and I don't go through all that, but here's the deal. You get a person arrested in a city, and I understand, they go to a regional jail, and you pay a fee every day. Now, there are those, now, again, we're gonna talk dead flat truth again, okay? There are those out in the wilderness that believe that there's people that are sitting there in jails, and you're paying for it, and they're sitting there, and really and truly, they've not even been, been through the paperwork, or prosecuted, or whatever it may be, and they're just in a holding pattern, you're paying for it. And we can improve upon that, okay? Now, here's what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna say that's a tick over here on this side, okay? Then there's people that are there that are, you know, on crimes, that we really and truly could some way, somehow, process, you know, you know, process them and get them through the whole process, and then they maybe don't need to be there. So that's another little teeny tick. And at the end of the day, there are those that believe that those ticks could add up to such a significant number that it would really lower the impact of the burden that you're carrying. And that's hogwash in my book. That's just hogwash. You're going, those ticks are gonna mean something, but if you're paying $50 a day, those ticks are gonna maybe give us five, or three, or a dollar. They're also gonna give us the opportunity, if we don't watch out, somebody's arrested in your backyard doing something that's really bad, and we process them in two and a half minutes, and let them go, and they're back in your backyard, and before you know it, we've got a food fight on our hands like you can't imagine. So the, the answer, don't fall prey to that answer, because that answer will make us better, and it will, and it give us the ability to get cheaper, but it will not solve your dilemma. And your dilemma has to be solved one of two ways. It's gotta be funded. It's gotta be funded. And it's either gotta be funded with the state stepping in and helping substantially, or the cities stepping in and helping substantially. That's all there is to this issue. It's just as simple as that. The cities, if they arrest somebody and send them off and everything else, the cities are going to have to participate, or the state's gonna have to participate, or the counties are gonna have to just carry it. We can tweak it to make it better of how we process people, and how we expedite the thing, and we can cut out the waste, and we can, we can make it better, but I'm telling you, that's not gonna solve it. It's going to take the state bounding up to the bar, or the cities helping to participate, or the counties being able to just carry the burden. I'll do everything I possibly can from the standpoint of finding some way, somehow, for the state to help carry some of the burden, because I, I got it, I get it, that your, that level of your burden is probably a very, very significant amount of your budget, and it's getting more and more and more and more. And we could do this. We could say, "Everybody that comes to a regional jail that their first name's Jim, we're gonna let them go automatically. We're just gonna let them go. No matter what they do, we're gonna let them go." So the county's gonna have to pay for it. And I'm telling you, that's gonna be a tick, because there's a heck of a lot more people coming there that aren't named Jim than are named Jim. You know, and so that's not gonna solve it. What's gonna have to happen here is exactly what I'm talking about. The state, the state is going to have to dedicate resources directly to being able to aid in helping that problem. The end of the day, well, it's the cities and the counties. The last time I checked, those counties and cities were all in West Virginia. So it's the state's issue. It's the state's problem. And so, we want the cities to be able to help, sure. We want the counties to be able to help, sure. But at the same time, the state's gonna have to step up. Okay?
Governor?
Yes, sir.
You recently started a program called Jim's Dream, I believe. Is that correct? Does that name something else?
It does.
Well, my daughter-in-law works for, in that program. Now, she worked out, worked for, and transferred into your program. And I was wondering how that program is coming, and it's not that old, and how, what's, what's your goal there?
Okay. They changed the name to Jobs and Hope, because you can't have, I don't know, it's the craziest stuff in the world. You can't have a politician's name on the thing and whatever, okay? So it's called Jobs and Hope. Basically, what it was, was it was a, an attempt to, to curb this terrible epidemic that's eaten us alive, is the drugs. And what it also was, was an attempt to be able to help us to train our people to be able to do real stuff. So basically, what we said is that we're gonna have treatment for free, and we're gonna have training for free. And if you do both, and you do really good, and you pass drug tests and all that kind of stuff, we can have some level of expungement, or some level to get your driver's license back. Basically, we want you back, and we're gonna really try to get you back. Okay, so, so, we put the thing together, the legislature was kind enough to fund it, and off we go. Now, in a little more than three months, we've processed 1,500 people, 1,500 people, and it's killing. It's just not working, it's killing. And it's absolutely going like great guns. Now, we're not talking about six people. The National Guard's involved and doing great work and all that kind of stuff, but let me tell you, those are the components that I put up on the board in my State of State. It took a little while to get it all processed and all put together and everything, and I think we got it all in motion in October, and boom, here we go. But the other component was brought to it that I didn't have in my thing, which was a genius. And that's why when we collaborate, everybody, everybody can put in thoughts, it really helps, is that is the transition agents, and maybe your daughter's a transition agent. Now, unbelievable what that component does, because that component gives the person that is there a one-on-one all the time, and they follow them, and they help them. They help them not only through the whole process, but then they help them after they go out into the workforce. It's really working. And there, those transition agents are doing fabulous work. Really, really good. I mean, it's really the real deal. Now, is it gonna solve the entire drug epidemic? No way, but it's really helping. I always take time to just say this. There's another thing out there that is, to me, and, and I don't say this because of my wife in any way, shape, form, or fashion, because just to tell it on the street, Kathy nor I knew doodly about communities and schools. We didn't. We didn't know or learn anything about it. And then all of a sudden, Kathy was looking for a place to have a cause, to have a purpose almost of what she was doing. We didn't have any money. The only place we knew anything about communities and schools was, schools were, were in Greenbrier County, and they were doing a really nice job there. A hundred percent graduation rate, it was amazing, with, with at-risk kids that were having all kinds of problems. So then, communities and schools was started, because that's where I donated my salary to go to, and we started it. And then all of a sudden, the legislature gave us some real money, and we got it rolling even more. Now it's in 12 or 15 counties, I don't know what it is, but get this, there's 28,000 kids that they're working with today. Now, those kids, if you go to the schools, you go to the teachers, and now what we're trying to do is expand that program to a bigger part of the state, and more and more and more counties. Eventually, what we wanna do is get it in all the counties. And one of the national members that's on the board, Shaq, I didn't know that when we started all this, but Shaquille O'Neal's on it and everything, and it is truly amazing. Because here's the thing, you had a student that was really a problem child, maybe in a classroom, and holding all, a lot of people back, and maybe they were hungry, or maybe they were cold, or maybe their mom and dads were just drugs beyond belief, or maybe whatever the problem may have been. And now we're not only helping that kid, and that kid is achieving, but we're helping everybody else too. And the other thing about Jobs and Hope is just this, remember, it's treatment, it's training, real training, not teaching you how to drive a pickup truck when you, when you're gonna apply for a job on heavy equipment, you need how to be able to drive a 777 rock truck. It's real training. But the other great part about it is this, is if you don't have a drug problem whatsoever, and you wanna come and just do the training, it's open for everybody to just do theirs way. It's really good. It's working. Thank you for, is it your daughter or daughter-in-law?
Daughter-in-law.
Daughter-in-law. Tell her thank you for all she's doing. Yes, ma'am.
Governor Justice, on behalf of Preston County, I would like to not only recognize the thank you for the work on the roads in our county and surrounding counties that I'm aware of, and also like to thank you in advance for the promise that you've made to, and the commitment not only to work alongside the Department of Transportation to ensure that the work will continue and that we will be able to make the targets. Thank you.
Well, we're sure gonna stay after. I will absolutely assure you of that. Everybody here, and I heard a statement the other day out of the legislature, I never thought I'd ever dream to hear, you know, but they said... thought I'd ever dream to hear, you know, but they said, "Every person in our caucus would probably say that in their areas, no one has a complaint about what's going on with the roads." You know, that isn't perfect, it's nowhere close to perfect, but compared to where we were, we're after it, and we're getting it done. And now, with what we did with this great man, and these obvious people, and Dave Hardy, and all of, you know, from the Secretary of Revenue, and all the stuff that they just did in the second bonding going out and all that kind of stuff, you know, we picked up an extra 146 and a half million dollars, and we can just pump more and more and more money into our secondary roads and just keep doing what we're doing. And I'm telling you, right on the cusp of all that, and you mark it down, mark it down, right on the cusp of what we've done is coming at some point in time here, it still may be a year away, but at some point in time, real soon here, is gonna be a federal infrastructure program, and at that point in time, we just keep going and going and going. You know, it's gonna be good stuff, good stuff. If you have any other questions, I'm outta here. You notice this still held me up, didn't you? Thank y'all.